Actually, I will, sorry, I will, I'll go to the beginning. We were not using microphones tonight at the suggestion of IT. We're going to try to use these two owls and see if that works any better.
Great.
And we have camera remotely. So I'll leave it to the coach.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the planning board meeting for like a sixteen. We have, we're going to begin with a joint public hearing with the planning and development committee and committee of the whole of the proposed short-term rental units ordinance. I'm going to go through the rest of the, our agenda after we conclude that public hearing. So I'll just go right to that public hearing. So I'll start with a roll call for the planning board. Alden Clark.
Here.
Beth Alou.
Yeah.
Bauto.
Here.
Jamie Pennington.
Here.
Heather Rogers.
Yeah.
Richard Yeager is not here. Rick Tanger here and Charlie Palmasano Associates here. Great. Hey, do you like to open the meeting?
Yes, thank you. So I am Connie Preston. I'm going to be chairing as city councillor. I am going to be chairing this meeting tonight because Cameron, who is the chair of planning and development, has another pressing commitment that makes him need to participate.
Yes, I am participating remotely. Thank you, Council President. And yes, you did not seize the reins from me. I appreciate you taking up the chair because I think that will be easier. Thank you.
So in attendance is myself, Connie Preston and Cameron. Present.
Present.
So as I mentioned, we're going to just begin with this joint public hearing under the proposed zoning ordinance. Is there anybody going to speak to the ordinance tonight or we?
I apologize, I had not actually spoken with the sponsor about that. My estimation would probably not given the context here, but.
I actually did speak with the sponsor the other night, Monday night after council. And he said that he did not feel it was necessary. And then there are no substantive changes.
No changes at all.
Since the last meeting.
So just as a matter of introduction, as everyone knows, we had a long discussion of the, this proposed short-term rental unit ordinance during the spring. And the planning board concluded its deliberations and issued a report with recommendations as required by state law on, I believe it was June twenty first. Yes, and that handed it over to the city council. My understanding was it has not, did not get out of the planning and development committee at that time. And then just due to scheduling issues and so forth, the ninety-day period between the close of a public hearing and opening the, and having a final vote by the city council, could not be known. The city council was not able to have, because of scheduling problems, have a meeting. So what happened is the sponsor, Councilor Zee, resubmitted the exact same ordinance that was submitted last winter, maybe last January or something like that. And so my assumption is unless there is any new information that we, that we hear tonight, that was not, was not heard previously, that the board can simply revote its, or have a public hearing, hear from residents, hear from the public, close the public hearing and potentially revote the same report. So there's just continuity from where we were on June twenty first to where we are today. That, that may not be the key, the way it goes, but that's the way I'm thinking of it. And I think that probably the planning and development committee could close the hearing and keep it in committee and then move forward, however you wish to move forward, along with licensing permits.
Yes, exactly. So that is our intention to close our portion of the hearing tonight. And then, you know, we, we fully recognize the need to bring this to the forefront with council as soon as possible. As you mentioned, scheduling has made it very difficult for us as we go through budget season and then obviously the summer vacation season. And, but we do intend to bring this, take this up as quickly as possible after the conclusion of the hearing. But we do need this extra time to do it.
Right, so, so again, this is really more than anything else, a technical thing to have this, have this new hearing. So as I mentioned, the, the, the previous ordinance, it has been posted on, on the website for tonight's meeting. The previous planning board report with recommendations is also posted on the website for this meeting. So with that introduction, I would just open it up to the public hearing for if anybody wishes to come forward and comment on either or both of those documents. Yes, please come forward. I want to state your name and address, please.
So this is officially the public hearing?
This is the public hearing, yes.
And there's not going to be another one?
Well, we'll see what happens.
I, I really am opposed to investor-owned short-term rentals. I think it's going to change the entire community aspect of Newburyport.
You should mention your name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, Judy Meradian, five Beck Street.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, I think that it's going to take property off the market. We already have a shortage of property for purchase or rental. It's going to drive the cost of rentals up. I really hope that this board has done some research in other states and other countries who are going crazy trying to figure out what to do now because it's just a proliferation of strews. And it's, it's, it's really becoming a problem. And I think that there is nothing wrong with owner occupied short-term rentals. My issue is with investor-owned. And I think it's going to really come back to bite us. And also I think it's going to be really hard to enforce any kind of rules that we have. So I hope you will really reconsider that part of it. I think that owner occupied strews are the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. I should, I should also mention that we did receive an email, planning office receives an email basically essentially saying the same type of thing from Pamela Kim from Eleven Tremont Street.
Hi, Tim Smith, three Marlboro Street. I think I've probably been talking about this before. You know, with all due respect to the prior speaker, I think she's speaking the future as if these properties don't exist. In fact, they do exist. And as I've said many times, I'd love to see a data-driven quantifiable justification for involving parking or nuisances, speaking to why they, they shouldn't exist. Now, Council President could have something to do with solve this problem immediately where grandfather clause and licensing. And essentially every single complaint I heard from the last meeting could have been solved easily with those two things. What's proposed now is essentially, in my opinion, and some other people I've spoken to that will be of interest to you eventually, is that excluding Plum Island many restrictions is discriminatory, anti-competitive and a big problem. And there's some other issues I think that will probably, probably arise. If it's parking issues, plan issues, the data doesn't, it's not here, I'd love to take a look at it. I don't see it, I don't see it posted. And again, I don't believe every other house should be a short-term rental or the role of the fabric of the community. And I think that the original legislation spoke about fairly. I think what I see now is essentially arbitrary and creitious line drawing where these things can and can exist. And I just don't think it's going to hold up where it needs to. You know, and some people can speak to the fact that they can say that it rose to the poverty of the neighborhood. And some people in this room, in this very, within a tent, you can basically say, no, I don't, they don't think, it doesn't actually. You know, if you're licensed and you keep a good, good clean shop, it won't. You know, if you begin to allow every house to have short-term rentals in there because it's owner occupied, essentially turning every house into a potential revolving door lodging house. The folks that are, they're going to be vetted, do we know what these people are? Investor property, they're run by professionals, but we vet our folks, we know who they are. We have, we have a strict basis. And we make sure they clean up after themselves and the neighborhood's not affected. And that's the case so far. And if you pass this, this legislation, this ordinance, they're going to be hundreds that go on the ground, hundreds of these short-term rentals. You can see any tax revenue from them. Trying to enforce these people and find them and extract tax revenue and police them is going to be horribly expensive. And, and how are you going to find them? They're not going to be on Verbo anymore, the other platforms, you're going to have to dig for them. And I think that, that's a consideration that should be thought of. I mean, it sounds great, okay, then it's not that simple. And I think more thought has to be put into it. And I don't see that thought being put into it, to be honest and to be fair. And I, you know, I, to be honest with you, after seeing how this committee works, no offense, but now I know why this service is, doesn't have a home in three years because nothing, nothing is done. And, you know, I come here and I just sit here and it's the same thing over. So that's really all I have to say. I hope something does get done that's smart and meaningful. And I haven't seen it. And we hope to, a lot of other folks do too. And they don't see that because they're sick of hearing the same thing too. But there's hundreds of them out there, short-term rental folks who, who manage good shops. And I will say too, the complaints last time were from, I think it was based on Mill Street. And the new ordinance, from what I saw, allows short-term rentals in the street. So that particular business won't be affected, it'll still be there. Pull of, maybe the complaints will, will still, they're magically vanish. Maybe there's a magically vanish clause in this new ordinance that, that I haven't seen yet. But, you know, it's just exhausting for everyone. And everyone's just sitting there, we're spending our, our, you know, we live. And there's no, what this ordinance, I don't, I don't see it passing. It's, it's simply not fair. And I don't believe a court will see it as fair either, discriminatory in its base, discriminatory. So you can allow Plum Island brands to continue as they're going, but you're going to, you're going to limit other commercial enterprises. I don't think it's going to hold up. But anyway, I think I've gone over my two minutes. Thanks for that, I'm surprised that didn't interrupt me. You awake today?
Thank you.
Anyway, I appreciate it, thank you. And I do, I do appreciate you, Chris, I don't want to get that impression, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Tim.
My name's Randy Murphy, I've been a resident here for twenty-three years. I went down to the art association this weekend and there was an artist selling these really cool postcards that were photos of downtown Newburyport Market Square in the seventies. And I think we've all seen some pictures like that of what it looked like. And so I think we're here tonight partially because we're victims of our own success. Newburyport's become a very profitable place to live. And I think everyone in this room would attest to that. So therefore we have this problem, people want to come here. Unfortunately, we don't have enough places for them to stay. And, and so there's needs for people such as workers working the dredges that works that helped clear the harbors past winter to find short-term housing in this town. There's needs for parents to come visit their kids that are now living in this town. There's needs of young kids in their twenties that want to come back and visit and stay in this town that they grew up in. These are the types of renters that are accommodating these places. I think there's a need for investor-owned short-term rental units in this town as well. I, I, I wonder about the dichotomy that's created between investor-owned is bad, evil people, and owner occupied, good, angels. It's not that simple. Investors are good people. And I'll share with you another story tonight. A couple of years ago, I went down to Wilmington, North Carolina. I didn't know anything about that town. I went there because I found a cheap place and I was going to visit some relatives in North Carolina. So I looked online for a hotel room and all that was coming up was cheap, you know, two-star, three-star chain hotels out by the highway kind of thing. And I assumed that Wilmington was a pretty lousy town as a result of that. I did a little more digging and I found some Airbnbs. Didn't realize they were investor-owned until I got there. And I realized only because there was neighboring unit that was only the same person. I had a wonderful time. I discovered a town, beautiful boardwalk, along a very nice river that had excellent restaurants, that had wonderful history, had a few hotels, but they were smaller hotels. Sounds a lot like Newburyport. In fact, some friends of mine that are from Newburyport are retiring down there someday when they get sick of the cold winters we have. My point being with this two stories that I've told you tonight is we've got a wonderful town. Investor-owned is not a bad thing. I think investors will bring the proper structure and character to the town. I don't think there's any more risk of having poor renters in a short-term rental unit owned by the owner occupied unit versus an investor one. The other thing I disagree with in concurrence of the pastor on this spoke is the discrimination between Plum Island. Yeah, thirty years ago or so, Plum Island was a short-term rental community. And Newburyport was a lousy place to live downtown. That's changed. Now we see Plum Island being as residential and as owner occupied as downtown is. And it's almost saying to people that we don't want short-term people. We don't want people to like visiting our downtown U T areas and we prefer to give them exclusion on Plum Island. Yes, I know it's harder to place restrictions on Plum Island than it is out here just because of the history of it. But I don't see any logical reason to create that discrimination. So anyway, thank you very much for listening to me tonight.
Thank you. Yes.
Hi, my name's Marge Kazalem. I live at one of my state street. And I live on the south side of High. And I just wanted to say that in the proposals that you're looking at, they talk about residential three, R three as being having more liberal rules about investment properties. And I feel as being a residential three homeowner that those are the areas where the houses are closer together. And one of the biggest complaints that I hear about VRBOs or Airbnbs is noise. So I don't understand why you're being more lenient in the R three section. And so I just wanted to bring that to your attention. Noise, parking is more, is harder to find in that area. Not as opposed to high-street homes where, you know, maybe there is a distance between one house and another. We're pretty much, you know, you can hear what your neighbor's doing. And so that's all I want to bring to your attention.
Thank you. Yes.
I haven't really gotten into politics before, but. Oh, I thought it was just working the whole room. Hello, Bill Vogel, Congress Street, Newburyport. Been here twenty-three years. Quiet residential neighborhood. About a year ago, next-door neighbor house, small colonial cute house for a potential young family was purchased by an investor. It's been rented out Airbnb ever since. We live in a desirable New England town. And last summer, all I heard was, we're here for the weekend, for whatever reason. We have the good restaurants to go to, this is great. House sleeps up to eight people sometimes, four couples, four callers, small yards, small street, out in the backyard, breakfast, lunch and dinner. They're allowed to have their dogs, whatever their dog might be barking, gets the neighbor's dogs barking. I live in a half-house. Now the other half of my house, the new owner on that half, young children scraping money together, moves out of her house so that people can come and stay in her house. I have it on both sides of me. Totally ruins our cute neighborhood and totally takes away from the charm of Newburyport. And however you're going to get this passed, it's just, it's evil. It's evil. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Shannon Savelon, one hundred Water Street. I've been a resident for thirty-eight years. We all know how Newburyport has changed over those years. A lot for the good and not so good. My house is on the corner of Water and Lime Street. There was a time when you could park on Lime Street. Over the years, there's no place to park. Why? Because all of the developers were able to come in and take single-family homes and turn them into condos. So in that way, the flavor of the neighborhood has changed. Not necessarily there because people need a place to live. And if they buy a place and that's their home and that's the neighborhood, that's fine. But to have an investor come along and live whoever knows where and make money off of our neighborhoods is just wrong. And, and, and just really would ask you to consider, what, what that gentleman just spoke about. How would you like it? And you could have it. I mean, that could happen to any one of us. I told the story several times at this mic, I never like it. That I have a three-unit building. I could absolutely do Airbnb. I could calm them. I don't want to. I like the idea of a home and a neighborhood. But I had a tenant one summer night with a friend over, two couples. And she hit the screen door unlocked because you could do that in Newburyport. And in walked a drunken man claiming, you know, he was going to, where's my bed? Where am I, where am I now? What'd you do with my room? And they, you know, quieted him down and told him he was in the wrong building. He was having an Airbnb. And just walked into the wrong place. Now you might say, well, they should have had the door locked. But that wasn't Newburyport all the time. It is now, but it wasn't always. Anyway, the two guys were there, thankfully. If my female tenant had been alone with her friend, I don't, they would have been terrified. So moved him. And then he came back. So at that point, the police had to be called. Now, I don't know whatever happened to the person who rented that Airbnb, the disindividual. But our tax dollars being spent on police taking care of this, the disruption in peace of mind of people who are just trying to live in your home, it, it's just wrong. So, you know, the developers have done one kind of impact on Newburyport. Don't let the investors do it. And we're not, we're not just a business. We're, we're a city that's very much like a small town that people live in, want to bring up their children in. And, and we deserve and we have a right to the peace of mind of who our neighbors are from one day to the next. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Melissa Duncan. I live at fourteen Dove Street. I've lived here twenty-four years. I'm going to buck the trend a little when opposed both investor and home-owned short-term rentals. As far as I could tell from my research, it's pretty clear that short-term rentals have a detrimental impact on the supply and price of housing. I didn't really find any benefits. They also mentioned, if you Google it, you get housing, housing issues, noise, other documented neighborhood disturbances. And I don't think you're treading carefully enough to think of the long-term consequences. Particularly what happens is young families can't afford to live here. And I know even with the owner occupied, the last two homes that sold in my neighborhood were vacation homes. They can subsidize those with Airbnb. So we went from having full-time neighbors who live there, who shovel their sidewalks, who shop downtown to people who, some people come in the summer. And I don't think that's good for the fabric of our neighborhood. And for the long-term consequences, you know, someone brought up that, you know, in the nineteen sixties, the leaders here had the presence of mind to buck the current trend at that time, which was urban renewal, for which we are all grateful. But the trend of this time, and it's clear if you look at the crises that are happening in other cities in Massachusetts, Provincetown, Nantucket, short-term rentals play a significant role in the fact that the people who they need to work in the restaurants can't afford to live there and things like that. So I'm just asking you to think of the long-term consequences, what happens with our school population as more and more housing goes to people who aren't going to go to, go to the schools. You can't choice your way out of that. Things like that, thank you.
Thank you.
Kathleen, twenty-one Otis Place, Newburyport. It's a house on Garden Street, Sixth Garden Street, which is, if you go on the internet, it's the first one that pops up under the VRBO. And it's eight rooms, four bedrooms, sleeps eight, small driveway. The owner does not live there. It's a duplex of eight, Garden Street is owned by another, it's called Garden, Otis Garden Properties. That is not VR. So this man that owns this house is, is also the president of Priority Leasing in Melrose. He does not live in Garden Street. It's rented out almost every single week. It started out five seventy-five a night, now it's back down to three seventy-five. Garden Street, as you know, is just a small little street from State to Otis Place. And it's very congested for parking. There's hardly any parking for the people that live on the street. This past weekend, we had people there from Florida, California, Connecticut. He just, I mean, it's well-kept, it's a beautiful little house, but he should not, he doesn't live there. And he's renting this out almost every week. If you look at the calendar on the internet for him, his calendar, it's pretty well full. So I think, you know, Garden Street is pretty hard to get across as it is. It's a two-way street and you can't even, you have to pull over to let someone else by. It really should be a one-way street, but in fact, it really is so in badly repaired that needs to be repaid. It's going to, in fact, it has a great big pottle right in front of this house. So I don't know, I just, I would have the last minute, nothing seems to be done about these.
Mary Creachey, two thirty-two High Street. Our first gentleman mentioned the nineteen seventies when we managed to preserve our downtown. And instead of having the Green Street parking lot, we were going to have the Zayers. So we did a good thing back then. I'd like to see us do the same thing with our neighborhoods. Let's preserve our neighborhoods. And one of the ways we do that is to avoid the investor-owned strews. Because I disagree with the gentleman. I think that when an investor isn't part of the community and doesn't have the emotional ties, they do manage it differently. They may manage it professionally, but it's a distinctly different cultural field to it. I also think if they're owner occupied, we should not allow the owners to be away for three months vacationing somewhere else and leaving the place run by itself. So there needs to be somebody on site who can respond to problems twenty-four seven and who can instruct the renters as to the proper conduct and facilities that are available. And I think the owners should be limited to how many days they can be away because they need to really be there and see how their unit is actually being used. So with that, I think we put this in place, we need to have strict regulations and we need people willing to enforce it. One of the important points is, is the money that it costs to enforce it. I think we should let our licensing fees high enough to pay for that cost, whatever that turns out to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Jane Stone on Gotham Street. I, I did have a really bad experience. We have a wonderful, nice little neighborhood on a dead-end street. And one of the newer people rented out their home as a short-term rental and didn't say anything to anybody. And I woke up to have around ten cars parked all over my garden beds, down my driveway. I couldn't hardly get out. And I made the mistake of going out. And I thought that the new owners had had like a big birthday party for the family. And so this young gentleman came out and I, I said to him, gee, you know, if you're going to have a family party, just let me know. Don't park at my flower beds, we'll work something out. And I can't repeat what he said to me. But basically, they had come from New York and it was a bachelor party. But basically they had come from New York and it was a bachelor party for the boys. So, um, the beer bottles, the whole nine yards. And so when, you know, I tried to reach out to the police to get some help and you couldn't get it. So that doesn't leave a good taste in my mouth, but I'm trying to understand that people do own their property. They do have, you know, some rights, I guess, as do I. And, but I think the hardest part of all for me is that we've been doing this now, and I can't tell you for how many years. Um, and we don't have any enforcement. We know we have a lot of short-term rentals in the city. And yet I think at last count, we had eighty who register and pay the bill. So to me, that doesn't speak highly of people that if you know that there's a policy, but. And they've been told that, you know, under the current way it's set up, that they are not allowed. And yet they continue to do that. They continue to run their business and rent and stuff. So I think for me, unless you can convince everybody that you are going to have a really strong. It's going to have to be several people who can monitor these folks and hold them accountable when their guests don't act properly. Um, you're really kind of hurting a lot of neighborhoods. And it seems when I did a lot of my research and data. The most of the short-term rentals at that time seemed to really be in Ward Two and a little bit in Ward Three. And I forget now the list. I think it was like two hundred and seventy-eight. That's a lot of to have in those two areas and they're very congested. So I don't envy your position as to trying to figure out the magic that's going to fix all this. But I do stress to you that if you are not going to support and have it somewhere in the odd coordinates. That the city has to have someone monitoring these. You're, you're really hurting your own residents. And please be, keep that in mind as you make your decisions. And again, I appreciate all your work and your effort. And I hope at some point I live long enough that we see a resolution that will protect the neighbors. And offer people an opportunity to do what they want with their property, I guess. But thank you.
Thank you.
I have a, uh, sorry, uh, Counselor Cameron has, uh, hard stuff as you know, seven forty in.
Just wanted to add, um, yes, and I apologize for not being there. Um, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm going to assume you can hear me. Okay. Um, yeah, yeah. So just, just to, this is the joint hearing. There will be at least two, probably three public meetings where the public will be invited to give input. Uh, those will be scheduled starting at the end of this month or definitely by, uh, the week after Labor Day. Those will be very well-publicized in the newspaper, um, and that will be your chance. For counsel, uh, everything that they need to know. Uh, we had told counselors that tonight was going to be pretty perfunctory. So after this joint hearing is closed from the planning board's side and the committee's side. Again, there will be more, uh, is, is a lot more opportunities for input, uh, for, for the public to talk to the whole council. So I just want to say that in advance.
Anybody else who wishes to be heard tonight for this public hearing?
I'm interested. Good question. Do you want me to get up?
You can ask the question. The best show will be able to ask.
Yeah, I'm just a little confused as the process and, and the hearings and is, is it this yes or no as it is? Is there still an opportunity to make adjustments by the council? I'm also a little confused as the role of planning for versus the other council.
I get it.
Thank you.
Um, if that, if there's nobody else who wants to be heard in the public hearing side, then I will close the public comment. And, um, is Ed gone at this point?
I think he's still with us for a few minutes.
Why don't you vote to close your?
Yes, I would agree.
I'm, I'm, I'm still here.
Can you hear me, Counselor Cameron?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me? Yes.
Yes, can, did you want to make a motion to, well, I guess maybe I can make a motion to close, uh, the public hearing for the city council? Maybe if I, if I have the microphone.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Oh, perfect. All right, then all, uh, roll call. Uh, Counselor Cameron, how would you vote on that?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. So we can consider the, the public hearing for the city council planning and development committee to be closed.
Okay, great.
Yeah, yes. And we, we would make a motion to, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Good point. Yes.
For the, for the council committee.
I second that. Uh, how would you vote on that?
Yes.
I also vote yes. So yes, we are adjourned. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you so much and see you all very soon. Thank, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, um, so in response to that, last question. Um, so the planning board has a statutory responsibility to make a ref, a report with recommendations to the city council. Uh, we do not have, we do not get involved in actually enacting the ordinance if, if it's in the city council. So we made a report and recommendations in June on exactly the same ordinance. And, um, if you haven't had a chance to see our report and recommendations. It's, um, probably a little bit of something for everybody. Because we went through a number of issues with the ordinance and. Described the various points that you want to tie in board on each of those issues. And I just, I won't read the report, but the, um, the issues that we highlighted. Were, uh, the definition of owner-occupied short-term rental units. Uh, this question about how long an owner could be absent from an owner-occupied sho, uh, short-term rental unit. Uh, what the off-street parking requirements should be. Um, how neighborhood input should be accommodated, uh, in reviewing the, um. An application for a, a short-term rental unit. Um, how we would treat existing short-term rental units, whether there would be any type of, of amnesty or, or transition period. And the, the types of, uh, special permit findings and criteria. And I think the last point that we talked about in our report had to do with licensing enforcement. And just so you understand, our role as a planning board is to look at the zoning order, the proposed zoning ordinance. Which talks about where these things could be allowed and whether it would be allowed as a right or by special permit. And that sort of thing. And what the rules, what the zoning rules imply. There will be a separate ordinance altogether, which is about licensing fees. And that's really where a lot of the rules, the specific rules come in. And in our report, we highlight the importance of a strong licensing ordinance and, and enforcement. So that's, that's where we are. We're, that, we, we have a, uh, report and recommendations that we are required to give. To the city council, uh, prior to, or as a, as a result of this, this hearing. And we, um, as I say, the, the ordinance is for us now is the same one that we struggled with all last spring. Uh, and we have posted our report from June twenty-first. And, uh, my suggestion would be, and it doesn't have to be the way the board votes. My suggestion would be that we, um, basically we adopt the same report. Uh, unless there have been any, there have been any new information that's been provided, that you feel changes, hopefully the same.
Yeah, just before you, you bring it there, even though the planning development committee is officially closed. Just to add a little bit of our process to make sure that the, the public understands. So, uh, as, um, as Mr. Tanger has mentioned, the, the planning board's report to us, to the city council is advisory. Um, we can take it under advisement, um, but it, it doesn't necessarily, you know, um. We don't necessarily have to follow what comes from that. Um, but so the way that the, the, the council deals with this, um. So as, uh, Mr. Tanger, uh, mentioned, we have an ordinance in front of us that specifically talks about the zoning impact. Of, of short-term rental units, but the licensure piece of it is also very important. Uh, as this is, this joint hearing is with the planning and development subcommittee of the whole council. Um, and we specifically deal with the zoning piece of it within that committee. There is another subcommittee of the city council that specifically, um, handles licensing and permits. We are, are trying very hard as a council to, and, and I should mention that both pieces of this. The zoning ordinance as well as the licensing ordinance, um, are both what we call council of the whole. Which means that all of the city councillors can comment in our committee meetings, have a certain name to focus on this. And we are trying very hard to work in concert so that we make sure that the, the zoning ordinance and the licensing ordinance. Meet somewhere in the middle and, and work with each other. But so the way the process now works, and then the point of this public hearing is that it gives now by the statutory. We have a ninety-day window for the council to act. So now this will move, hopefully the, the planning board will close their hearing tonight as well. And this will now move to the council and, and comment on the council to act on this. We now have a ninety-day clock to make some sort of judgment, um, both on the planning and the licensing. And so there will be a number of council meetings that there's a lot to debate here. I, I do not anticipate that, that will get done in one, or probably even two. It might take at least three committee meetings for us to get through this. So there'll be a lot of opportunity for, um, for a comment and debate, uh, potential amendments to the ordinance. That may get us to something that, that can pass. So that's sort of the process. Well, we have ninety days now within the council to do something. Or else we are forced to yet again come back to a public hearing, which I don't think any of us really wants to do. Did I miss anything? Andy knows more about this than anybody.
Uh, no, I think you did very well. Both of you did very well explain that process. It says that, uh, uh, Counselor President mentioned the statute requires the planning board to provide an advisory opinion to the city council. Or at least gives an opportunity for that to happen. Um, and then we're basically resetting that clock for ninety days. And then there, I think from here, if the planning board is closing the joint public hearing and issuing a report, whether it's the same report or another. Um, it's very important then, as that form for the city council to be able to sort out between the licensing amendment, the zoning amendment. Um, and to really pick up, that is where we, I think, need to, um, focus our efforts in the coming weeks or months.
Okay, um, so as the first matter, I would put for a motion to close the planning board's portion of the public hearing.
So move to open.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Um, so, uh. Actually, this is.
Your second.
Uh, Heather's second.
Oh, yeah.
And actually, we don't have anybody remote, so we can just vote by the hands.
Yes.
All those in favor?
I agree.
Any opposed? Okay, the public hearing is closed. Now I would entertain a motion on, uh, you know, any discussion actually. Before, before we move ahead, before we have another motion, is there any further discussion on the, uh, on the ordinance or on our report?
I'm, I'm fine with that report. I would stand by it.
I agree. I think a lot of our work put in there, different links to your capture as well, so that's important.
Uh, in that case, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move to, um, re-submit our report.
No changes?
No changes.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Okay.
I think I vote.
Oh, you don't vote?
Remember, I wasn't here when we first, I wasn't here for the June meeting where we voted on it originally, but I think.
You can, you can vote this. Yes.
Yep.
Okay, that is it for the short-term relevance. Um, so now let me go through the, uh, the rest of our agenda, uh, to make you know what's going on. Um, we, I'm going to take a couple, one thing out of order. Um, we have a, a item under general business for approval not required plan for Plant Street. I'm going to take that early because that's, that's going to be a very quick item. And then we have three public hearings. Uh, the first is for one forty-nine High Streets, the city of Newburyport. And this has to do with, um, the, uh, design of the pump house at the Bartlett Mall. Uh, the second is also city of Newburyport. The address is three eighty High Street, but it really is. Four forty-seven Merrimack Street. That's lower, lower actions in common. And for a parking plan is a site plan review. Uh, we're going to have a discussion of waivers and a vote on the application completeness. And my understanding is we're, there's going to be requests to continue this, uh, to, to continue the, the substance of the discussion. To our September sixth meeting. Uh, the third public hearing is a special permit, uh, for, uh, seventy-five Parker Street. Um, we'll have an application completeness vote and, and the, and discussion of the special permit. Uh, that would conclude the public hearings. Uh, then under general business, again. Um, we have the CPC representative on the agenda that doesn't need to take action tonight. And we have, um, approval of minutes. And we have, uh, actually looking at a revision to the minutes, the approved minutes from last October fifth. Uh, with the error of the minutes. And then approval of the minutes of July nineteenth and August second. And then any, any other updates from the chair or the planning director. So, uh, let's move to the first item of business, which is the, um, approval not required plan for Plant Street. And we have somebody here to present that. Yes, come forward, please.
Hi, my name is Bruce Wallack and we're just basically just shifting the property line.
Any further questions?
Sorry, do you want to just, if you could, just speak to, uh, how you're, uh, adjusting the lot lines there for the board, just for their, uh, their purposes?
Well, the, um, the lot line towards, I live on Plant Street. We're going thirty feet towards, uh, Perry Road. It's basically we're selling the property at ninety-four Perry Road. My family owned it and, uh. It's just basically a buffer zone between the new neighbors and my apartment. That's basically it.
So the, um. Parcel A, the Sean of this plan is coming from which parcel?
Last.
The script is coming from the parcel area or the parcel?
It's coming from Ferry, Ferry Lot Three, yes. And be joined to the one on Plant Street.
So that you can, it's hard to make up the notation to that, a smaller scale, but by zooming, you can kind of see that notation there.
You can see that. Um, are there any questions before?
The office recommends endorsement of the plan not being one that creates subdivision, essentially.
So I accept the motion to endorse this approval of our required plan.
I'll move to endorse the, um, uh, uh, the plan. Plan, yeah, proven not required plan.
Uh, second.
Second, thank you. Any, um, call in favor?
I.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
It was easy.
Uh, we should have the Mylar for recording tomorrow. Uh, I want to check in maybe like morning, like morning to make sure that's available for you.
That would be great.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Real, real quick.
I'm not sure when I'm supposed to be able to vote on or not.
You can vote on the special purpose. So I, I will tell you what you're.
Okay.
And you're voting on this.
All right.
Uh, so the, the, uh, the next item is the, um. Special permit application for continued discussion, uh, continued public hearing. For the special permit application, uh, at one forty-nine High Street for the Bartlett Mall pump station.
Thank you. Uh, thanks again for your time. This is our, um, second time before you. Uh, we proposed a plan to prior and we've made some adjustments to after meeting with a couple of members of the planning board. Um, so we're going to the next slide. So this was a, um, pre-standing structure that's being proposed by our design team to house equipment, mechanical equipment. That would, uh, recirculate and pump the water and keep it clean, um, in the Bartlett Mall. Part of the larger restoration project. Um, we went over last time, sort of the details. It's a small building. Um, but because it is a new structure in the D O D, it requires approval from this board. Um, the height of the structure would be below the elevation of the surrounding streets. Because again, Bartlett Mall is in a natural forming, form kettle hole. Um, we went before the historical commission. They had some comments and suggestions, first being to rotate the building so that it was more or less, um, true to the edge of the pond. Um, second to be to shift it a little bit back from the pond. So it was tucked, sort of nestled up against the slope of the, um, the lower, uh, the lower part of the slope. Uh, third was to add some more architectural detailing. And fourth, to make it the brick facade a requirement. Going to the next slide. Based on that feedback, we did rotate the building, adjusted back slightly from the pond. Um, made the brick, which we had anticipated doing, um, a requirement. Um, we've wanted to keep the building somewhat, um. Uh, simple in nature, so as not to compete with the courthouse. And there's been some back and forth discussion about what that means. Um, going to go to the next slide. So we added some string coursing to match the facade of the courthouse, both at the foundation and eve line. Under the next slide. And that was when you last saw it. Um, so from there, we did meet with a couple of members of the planning board. We talked a little bit more about what detailing should be or should not be included. Um, trying to remember what the difference was on this one.
Uh, the dentals.
Sorry, we added, um, my vision is going out. We added some dental molding as one of the options. And again, that mimics the dental molding at the courthouse. And if you want to go to the next option. We also added pilasters to either side of the doorway. Um, I'm not an architect. I know there was a lot of architectural questions at the last meeting. So if you can put up the next slide, I'm actually going to invite Chuck Griffin to come up and speak, who is an architect. Um, and had was part of the meeting with a couple of board members and give his sort of feedback as to why some of these decisions were made. Um, and then maybe uh, Andy, after he does a quick presentation, I think he has a separate slide that we can go back to this.
Sure.
Image, which I think is useful to show the differences.
My first slide. Um, first apologies, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, Tinker and board members. I'm, I had surgery on my head and I missed two meetings. I missed the one with the historic commission and I missed one of your group. So I wasn't able to ever feed it and explain anything, which is awkward. Next slide. I apologize for that. Kim and I should have coordinated this. She did a lot of my work. So starting out, we have this underground uh, solution. I think everybody, including Kim and myself, and everybody would love to see this hidden. That was the idea. Um, it turned out not to be possible. I don't need to drive, drive you through all that. It's been discussed. Uh, next slide. Uh, the issue is where it goes. You can see here in this oldest photograph taken in the United States, that on the far right is the access point to Frog Pond. Just barely shows. This is eighteen thirty nine, if you can believe it. Next slide. And we're going to to restore that entrance. It used to look like this at the turn of the century. This is roughly nineteen ten. And the pump house that we're talking about would be on the left where that yellow square is. Next slide. Uh. Uh, our, uh, the parks commission feels strongly that any additional building that's placed there needs to respond to the courthouse. So the question is, is the courthouse that we want to respond to, is it this building that we have today? Next slide. Or we find that no, one we have today is really not Bullfinch except on one elevation. Next slide. And so we look at the Bullfinch design thing and we take away from it the pieces that we want. And that's where the form comes from. Next slide. There it shows the signature of Mr. Bullfinch in eighteen oh five. We have the only known set of documents on any of these buildings done in his own hand. It's very, very fortunate and very rare to have this. Uh, next. If you look at the back of the building, it's still pretty much the way it was when he drew it. This is one of his drawings. Next slide. That's the way it is today. Everything is original there except the chimney and the roof wall. It was a hip roof with cables coming out. Next slide, please. Uh, this is my uh, using Bullfinch's plans. This is what it should look like. And there's an effort underway, which will start up once we get the pond uh, de- uh, uh, work approved. To, this has gone some distance, including to the courts. And we're looking at getting this restored at the arcade uh, and not using city money. Next slide. The front of the building looked like that. That's his drawing. The only difference from that. And what I just gave you is he holds the justice who's up at the top there has the scales in her opposite hand. Next slide. And so uh, the, the objects we have to work with as design elements are very limited. Uh, he, he was a man of uh, I would say rich forms, but not uh, playful forms necessarily. String courses, et cetera. And what is that? Next slide. String courses, that shows the back of the building on the right. The floor line is indicated by the upper wider marble band that's recessed into the marble. And the lower one is the spring line from the windows, narrower band. You can see here that something awful or different has happened to this building. Because of the corner to the right is different than the corner to the left. And you can look at the brick and even see that it's been carved around and messed with and they took the marble away. Next slide. So if we say to ourselves, we're not going to include windows uh, in the pump house because it doesn't need windows. Uh, that knocks out, that's his drawing. Those are my accents. We don't have those forms to work with. We have the pilasters between the windows. We have column capitals and we have string courses. Next slide. So originally, I just showed the simple building. And it was not well received by the uh, historic commission, though the word shed came up one thing and another. And uh, but the idea was, as Kim said a moment ago, a simple structure. Uh, and not shown here very well, but it has, the idea was a slave roof. Next slide. After the discussions uh, that we heard back from Joe Morgan and Richardson and others at the historic commission. I added the string courses, set the building on the white roof and had a string course at the head of the doors. Next slide. The other thing we could do is right now, what's been shown in the bit set. The drawing on the lower left that Kim had too, that shows what's in the bit set. It shows pilasters in marble or white stone with a column capitals. The same in dentals. And that is all per Bullfinch, the courthouse. However, in discussions here with uh, with your group and with Robert Coop, who, who's, I had this one idea, which I think is very appropriate. We could eliminate the use of the white trims as being too decorative for a building that isn't the courthouse, but an accessory building. If the column capitals could be terracotta, have to have a pair that are made that fit. And the uh, pilasters could be made by just projecting the brick outward to create a shadow line. So there's ways to dress down the building that has now been approved. Now is in the big set, if that's desired. And so the idea going forward, next slide, last slide. There's a desire, and it's, then Robert Coop helped me with this. It was his concept, is to take the building. And we can't get it underneath the top drawing, my very crude drawing to give to my staff. It shows the walkway, the mid-walkway would be on the upper right. Should have put a person there. If I could shove this building into the slope. Uh, we don't, we don't have time with the engineers to get their approval of this or what it would cost to slide the building back from the pond further. And push it into the slope. The advantages would be part of the building would be hidden. The other advantages, as you look at it from Auburn Street, you look more or less over the building uh, into the courtyard. And um, I think that's an advantage and get it further from the, um. The problem is cost. We're out for bids. We need to look at this again, once the bids come in and consider what's possible. Um, and I think lastly, maybe we need to look at the roofing materials not being slate, but something uh, less expensive. Uh, since it is a accessory building. That's where I am on the architecture. Are there any questions?
Yes. Um, so it's not really clear to me, uh, you, you say the warrants in the bid package is essentially option E with the uh, pilasters.
Yes, it's the white pilasters.
What are you, what are you actually posing tonight? Is, is.
I'm posing what the bid package shows is the base. Yes, and then after the bids come in, hopefully we can then work with people who are interested in the subject and. Possibly do what the last slide shows, but we don't know. We don't have prices yet.
Certainly, the idea was to put in the big, uh, bid package, the one we assume would be the most expensive. So that if you all decided you wanted to do something less than that, it would be a change order that would reduce the cost as opposed to increase the cost.
So uh, are there other questions for Mr. Griffin?
So I understand this correctly. You're trying to anticipate the future of the courthouse building by designing option E, is that what you're?
Yes, yes. The column and the column capitals are what Bullfinch did. They're not in the present courthouse building. They were ripped out in eighteen fifty four.
Okay. And how far along are you on that process?
Uh, we went to the point with the uh, uh, city council saw a presentation on it. And we've been also through the uh, judicial system, the people that run that. And we have their approval to move out of the building in a couple of years. And at that point, we stopped because TCAM controls property. They control all state properties. And Mayor Holliday was already working with them to get control of the property on Low Street. It's now a discussion to be the uh, youth center. And she didn't want two things in front of them at once, so we stopped and it hasn't been picked up. So once this gets going, so no one gets nervous that we're going to do city money here, then we will restart this program. Just trying to get this going. Joe Morgan.
Um, so I think, I think I have three questions about the building now moving further from the pond.
Yes.
Is there an initial increase in cost in running this equipment further? Is there an overall increase over time in like, now we have longer pipes and longer?
There'll be more money spent on it. We'll need to uh, probably have some fees from the engineers to look at this. There's gonna maybe be stronger posts needed. They're uncertain.
Yeah, there'll be a slight loss of efficiency. We don't think it would be too much, but it's something that the engineering team would obviously have to look at. Um, structural wall in the back, if it's holding up the slope. Um, you know, additional pipe, some exploratory, structural explor- exploration of the soils beneath and behind. Um, and it's, that's why we would like to move forward with an option presented tonight. Knowing that once the bids come in and we executed a contract with a contractor. We can then continue those conversations to explore the feasibility of pushing it back.
Right, and when you push it back, is it no longer going to be like fully brick on all precise? Because maybe that back becomes concrete with then brick coming above brick.
You saw the, the section that.
Right here.
Right there.
The upper groin.
Yeah.
Uh, that shows it into the earth. And so people, if you're walking along that mid-high trail, you could walk over and touch this building. So even I would say vandalism or it becomes an issue with this scheme.
And then what's below the earth is, if you correct, it would probably be like more of concrete or something?
Uh, right now, they have concrete block reinforced. It's a back up.
Okay.
And this is brick, uh, real brick.
Yeah.
As the finished material.
Okay.
And uh, dentals, it's, uh, picks up a lot of the detailing of the, what the courthouse was.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions before we continue the resume?
Couple of, couple of details uh, that we haven't talked.
Is it a question?
It's a question. Could you talk about the, the door? And there's a louver above the door.
Yeah.
And that louver is open to the interior for ventilation purposes.
Yes, it's a requirement of the engineers to have that door be open for ventilation purposes.
Yeah, this is a wet well and so there is a motor in there, so that you are gonna, it's gonna be a humid environment to some extent. Um, so they want to just have ventilation to keep the condition inside dry.
So when you were talking about in, in the report about the, the measure of noise, was that, that X? Then, was that considered in terms of like the noise escaping through that vent?
From everything we understand, that the equipment itself is at that, I don't have document from me, sixty or sixty-five DVA with absolutely no enclosure around it whatsoever. Um. That is inclusive of the cover that they provide, so that's the sixty to sixty-five DVA. So um, it's our professional opinion that this enclosure, even with the louver, um, would be reducing that by around twenty DVA. Um, and I did submit a document stating what the state guidelines are for DVA. And in, it said, you know, exceeding a DVA, this will not be doing that normal frequency via high pitch. So we are within the guidelines of the state code and your report does not have its own regulations, so we are abiding by that state code.
Sir.
We talked about.
Well, that's, that's, I, I wanted to have, because I think Kim said you have some more presentation, honey?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said you wanted to come back to.
Uh, we just won't reference, because this shows the options.
Yeah, I just wanted him to have this on the screen.
Okay, so, yeah, go ahead. So, so um, that's. Before we start discussing. I'm not sure we want to open up the public comment first.
Yeah.
Get it. That's, you're completely, let's, let's open this up, open up the public hearing at this point. Then we can come back and discuss further. So is there anybody in the public who wishes, yes, please come forward. Name and address and provide your evidence.
Sandy Nigetich, ninety-three High Street. Uh, the board is likely aware that CPA money for this project is pending city council approval of both final plan and the cost of building. Uh, and we're getting very close, as I understand it, to not having that decision in time for the project to start when it was planned. Um, it is important the project be scaled to what can be publicly funded and maintained. I'd, you know, I noticed that there's still a lot of discussion about trying to somehow hide um, this little building. What I appreciated at your last hearing was Mr. Clark's comment. That it would be a teachable moment to see a Frog Pond which is finally clean and the pump house which cleans it. Please approve a design which, um, for what it's worth. Um, in my opinion, needs to be something like option C. A design which nods to the courthouse without calling too much attention to itself. Pretending to be something that is not and costing more than the small aesthetic improvements would be worth. Thank you.
Thank you. But yes, yes, come forward. Name and address, please.
Suzanne Calligan, three nine Ed Street. Um, I was involved many years ago when the fountain collapsed during an ice storm in nineteen eighty-six. And at that time, we didn't look at putting a pump house in. I'm not necessarily opposed to it. I don't understand why. There was, and I hope there still is, a three-phase pump in the basement of the courthouse. And that was what was running the fountain. My brother maintained that fountain for many, many years. Until his death and then it collapsed. Um, so we were very, the family was very involved with it. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody knows that there was, there should still be a three-phase pump, which is what was needed in order to run that fountain. And there are also, on the fountain itself, there are also uh. Copper tubing that goes through the line, um, mounts, so that the water will flow from the bowl down over and into the pond. And that was circulated fine. And I don't understand, I, I know the, the, the fountain, I know that the pond is polluted. We had it tested privately, but we, I can't remember what the result of the tests were. But putting the building into the. Into the banking, where I used to go sliding when I was a kid. Um, I think the expense, I don't think is really with it. I might be wrong. If it's gonna open it up to having vandalism occur, then I think we need to protect it. If there's gonna be a separate house, I think it should be standing out on itself. Restand it. So, that's all I can have to say. Thank you.
Anybody else write their comment at this time?
And I, other than Andy, probably do have to move.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Hello?
Yes.
Okay, great. Glenn Richards, six Ken Street, uh, Chair of the Historical Commission, but my comments tonight are, are just my own personal comments with one exception. That's just to point out that um, the, the historical commission only, um, you know, everything that it officially said, it was in the advisory report. So um. So um, while I very much appreciate the changes that were made in response to some of the comments that were made at, at our, our meeting. They didn't want anyone to assume that there was any approval or disapproval or anything like that for any of the designs. Now, for my own personal thing, very briefly, uh, I, I think that all the changes that you guys have gone through are, are, it's commendable that you spent that time. The only comment I would make is actually echoing several that have already been made that, and it, it would be best not to go overboard on the decoration aspect. The, the white pilasters, I don't know, I think we might come to regret that. It's not, the, the whole project is to create a functional necessary building, not to somehow create a, some novelty, new addition that is somehow gonna improve the landscape or something. Yeah, but is, uh, the one, uh, change I hadn't thought of is the ventilation at the roof, the eve there. I think that's a, that's a really good uh, thing to do, I think, because it's very, very typical of this type of structure and that time period, et cetera. And I think that would, that would be perfectly fine. One of the, that, you know, as far as moving it back, I think, you know, work with your budget, whatever. I, I see you've already moved it back, which I think is great. That was my biggest thing was to not have it right at the curb for a number of reasons, so thank you for doing that. And lastly, um, Mr. Morgan, Joe Morgan, who's both on the CPC and on the Historical Commission, sent in a letter. I don't know if he's gonna make a public comment tonight, but I really encourage you to check out his note, because it's very detailed and specific. And in particular, it points out about the delegation of the design of this uh, structure. Uh, I didn't read the, I couldn't find that in the contract materials, whether you request for bid or it was. But he's saying that um, the actual design seems to be delegated to the contractor. So if that is the case, then, you know, all our wishes and, and hopes for the design might be moot if the, the, you know, designer, if it's up to the designer to do whatever it is they wanna do. So that was a really serious concern that I hope you guys can resolve. And that's it for me, thanks a lot.
Joe Morgan?
Yes, uh, hello, um, members of the board, good evening, this is Joe Morgan, fifty-five Hill Street. And um, as um, Mr. Richards just said, I did submit a letter dated on the, dated the fourteenth, I think that was this Monday, and with some comments. And I would just like to highlight, highlight a couple of them this evening and propose a couple of ideas. First, I have to reiterate my, um, my personal objection, and I believe it was formalized in our advisory report from the Historical Commission. That the, the recommended solution, that is recommended, is to not have a above-ground structure for this mechanical utility shed. It would be best to have it underground within the confines of the kettle pond. Historic landscape contours, or to have it up at, um, at street level. At least that's my opinion, and I do believe that uh, our advisory report recommended that um, it, uh, there be no structure there. So um, I want to again express my preference for um, a utility vault, a buried utility vault. I don't see any reason why technically that we, that cannot be achieved. It's a common, it's a common uh, element for civil engineering installations such as this one. Um, and I would like to remind everyone that as far as the, the utility shed slash pump house. There is no design um, within the, the bid documents. It is a delegated design, as Mr. Richards just um, said. There are some broad descriptive language requirements incorporated into the technical specification. And there's a couple of thumbprint images, but the legal language says that the contractor, the successful awarded contractor will be responsible for the aesthetic as well as the performance characteristics of the design. Of course, with input from the city and um, and whatever input that the city might have. But the, I can only imagine that, that contractual arrangement will only raise the cost for whatever is, is eventually decided on. Whereas a precast concrete utility vault is a pretty common structure. And it can be, the equipment layout can easily, I would think, be accommodated, especially since we're only talking some recirculation pumps and some, um, some aeration um, equipment. It's a fairly simple um, interior arrangement that could easily go into a, a buried vault. Secondly, I would like to object to the, I know it's not on the agenda specifically, but I want to object to the granite seat height block bench, which is to be installed on the Frog Pond perimeter. The blocks that, uh, these blocks are not the original granite curbs that were originally presented to the Historical Commission, nor the CPC. And they, this is the first instance where we've heard them as granite, uh, seat height granite blocks. They've always been referred to as curbs. And I believe that such um, an addition would be out of scale with the historical landscape. And it would effectively destroy the, the beauty, the, the gentle contours of the kettle pond grading. And where it meets the beach, and then of course, the plane of the water. Those are the, the truly pastoral elements of that landscape designed by Charles Elliot. We would lose those. So I propose that we go back to the original curb solution, a low-profile curb. And then that we might deploy some exterior furniture items around the beach if people really need to have that kind of intensive uh, seating arrangement. But at least it should not be built in to the, um, to the pond infrastructure. Speaking of infrastructure, I would like to however, recommend for the curb, the granite curb construction, that a concrete foundation be installed, a deep one, to resist um, nature's forces, um, the freezing of the pond and freeze-thaw from um, surface runoff from the surrounding slope areas. There is only currently shown in the documents, some structural fill, it's very shallow. Um, we know from the geotechnical report that there is a recommendation to have a concrete foundation uh, for that purpose. And it was actually accosted in an earlier exercise by a local contractor. So we do have some preliminary numbers for that, and I don't see why it is not in the bid documents. So I would ask the board to seriously consider these, these alternate solutions to minimize the intrusive visual impact that both the superstructure for the utility shed and the granite blocks. Sitting height blocks will impose on the landscape. And remember that this is a, what we have is a genuine Charles Elliot-designed uh, park here. And I don't think we, I don't think we would be proud of ourselves to, to make these kind of alterations to it. So thank you very much, I appreciate your attention this evening.
Thank you, Joe, um, just wanna make it clear, uh, I appreciate your comments. That I, you may be disappointed because the, the granite seating is not in our jurisdiction. It, it doesn't fall in the, uh, the category, uh, I talked to the uh, zoning enforcement officer. And this does not fall in the category of a, uh, a structure subject to downtown overlay district review. So, uh, well, I appreciate your comments. The issues of the landscape are not within our purview. Uh, we can only look at the design of the, of the structure before us. But I'm sure your, your comments have been heard by the applicant and uh, that at least is a benefit of your having made them. Uh, are there any other comments? Does anybody else here? Yeah, so you can close this uh, public comment period and now we can discuss.
And I have another question. Could, could you explain the delegated design?
Actually, before you, before you answer that question, I did look at the, and I just wanna make it clear to everybody that the delegated design does not supersede our approval.
Correct.
So, so they, they still have to, they still have to follow whatever we approved.
And I'm, I'm familiar with the delegated design process. I'm just wondering what the contractor received as guidance relative to the design.
Sure.
Did they receive?
They received the images. Uh, and there was also a detailed specification that was written that has all the prescribed requirements by the Parks Commission, Historical Commission, Planning Board. So it's all, it's all mapped out. I have a couple paragraphs that the engineer wrote in response, if you'd like me to read them into the record, or, or I can just leave it at that. And go to you.
Relative to delegated?
Yes, and the, and the reason why. So they wrote delegated design gives the contractor flexibility to find value engineering items that can end up saving the city money as opposed to being forced to provide what is shown on a traditional design bill, bid build approach found in years gone by. Delegated design is a common practice and it's done so at the direction of the city, and its representatives, the Parks Commission, Planning Board, et cetera, um, the design team. Delegated design does not mean the contractor has complete free rein to design and install whatever they desire in the name of saving time and money. The contractor must carry the proper license and designers and engineers to do the work. Perspective contractors have to pass qualifications for themselves, their subcontractors and designers. They cannot be fly-by-night, a fly-by-night operation. And then he just wanted to say, it's often hired by contractors for delegated design and design-build on other projects, um, and they are a professional engineer in term, um, firm. Um, so I, he just goes on to say that this is a, a fairly common practice, especially if you prescribe in there what the, what the approvals have been and what is required. And I will also add that there is a floor plan, it's not, there's not no information, and there's a floor plan that shows how well the equipment needs to be weighed out per building code. And, and there are other eyes from the city staff that need to approve this beyond boards and committees.
Yeah, it, it wouldn't be surprising at all if, relative to the technical requirements of water circulation and, and the pump equipment, that there was a performance specification, the contractor had some leeway relative to how that.
Exactly, right.
That, that, I get, no issue with that at all. The design of the building is, is much more subjective. So just sort of getting at what guidance they were given and, and, you know, what direction they were given. So that as they proposed something, there's something to, to judge that against. Some, some, you know, not performance criteria, but, but like performance, aesthetic criteria, that this was the intent of the city.
And that was all, again, written in that specification.
And, and again, the, it has to come back to the planning office and representatives of the planning board if there are any change, so.
Correct.
Could you just clarify, given the uh, comments that were made by the, in the public hearing about concerning the uh, pump in the courthouse relative to the pump that's in this building?
My understanding is the pump in this building is for the water circulation for cleaning the pond. So does it have anything to do with the fountain or? Yes. So the pump equipment that is currently in the courthouse basement, um, will no longer be used. The new pump equipment, which will be, you know, the three cycle, three phase, yes, will be housed in the new pump house itself. So that equipment will be operating the fountain. The fountain restoration is another piece of this project, although it's a separate CPA application from a few years ago. We just were never able to restore the fountain because we can't do that if the water quality of the pond is as it is. Because it, as you know, and those of you who are involved, it was operational, I think, for two months before they had to shut it down because the pond water made it inoperable.
Thank you.
Any other?
I guess, I guess I have a basic question, following that, following the public comment is, was this explored to use the equipment or put new equipment in the basement of the courthouse as opposed to this? Like, was that an option that was explored?
To put the pump equipment for the pond in the basement of the courthouse, it was the first thing we looked into. A, there's not enough space for what needs to be housed in there, B, it's extremely challenging to utilize that property. Or we have to drill through the foundation, um, and the courts are actually not thrilled with the fact that there is a reverse osmosis system in there that the city installed a few years ago. It's very challenging to gain access because it is a secure building. So for all of those reasons, we abandoned that very early in the design process.
So the existing pump wasn't actually cleaning the pond water, it was just operating the fountain?
Yes, which isn't enough to aerate the whole pond. It's not enough oxygenation and circulation, it's just not powerful enough.
Sure, okay.
So, in terms of the options, the options, or how, how we act on the options. You're, you have proposed option E, correct?
We have put into the bid set option E because it is the most detailed.
What is your, I guess my question is, what are you asking us to prove?
I'm sorry.
Which option are you asking for?
Well, the one that we're asking for is the one that's on the front of the documents, the bid set, that has the white pilasters.
That's your, that's your preference in design?
Yes, that would be okay. I think scaling that back and making a terracotta with projecting the brick that was suggested would scale it back uh, to be less decorated.
Well, I'm trying to make this as simple as I can, so I don't want to, I, I'm trying to avoid a change later, if a change is.
Well, I would like to say that B, the option with pilasters and capital would be projected brick and the terracotta capital.
That's, yeah, that's not the course, yeah. So, so the preference right now is to do the one you have, of course.
E.
Option E, okay.
Definitely what you want.
It is established.
The one that's operating with the pilasters.
Yes, okay, that's the, I can't, is that an E?
E.
I feel like I'm at the palm, right? Yes, that one.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just, uh, from my point of view, my preference would be option D. I think it has some elements of the courthouse with the string coursing and the dentals, which I think is um, enough to relate it to the courthouse uh, without being overly fancy and um, perhaps, um, you know, less expensive. I do like the idea of pushing it back, as we had discussed a little bit further, to preserve some of the views um, from the surrounding area so that doesn't intrude that much on the pond. So we talked about that, that option, but that would be my preference.
Would you like a small state of preference?
I'm, I'm, I guess I, I'm not really sure I want to do. I, I guess I.
Because if we were to vote, and.
If we vote, any, any of us wants for a different option.
Right, like, or somebody will say no.
Could I offer something at the moment?
Yeah.
I think what really tipped my mind here, well firstly, I preferred option C from the beginning, so I'll just show my hand right away. I don't think it needs a lot of ornamentation, and when I listened, I qualified to this by watching previous hearing. When I heard, let's see more detail, I heard, let's see more information about C, not like add more details and ornaments. But D is nice, not, D is not bad either, but really, take that aside for a moment. If this is a delegated design, we really do not want a, like an engineering firm, like doing like, I want a column detailing. So I think that just right away to me, wants it to like, let's do something simple, because it'd be really hard to, it would be, not impossible, but more difficult to mess up the detailing of a simple structure. So I came back around to option C for that reason as well, so I just want to put that out there. I'm very nervous about illegal design for option E even, frankly. To me, that makes option E kind of a non-starter, so.
I, I agree, I, option E, I don't, it doesn't appeal to me, even if it's terracotta. I don't feel like the objective of this pump house should be to nod so much to the courthouse as much as let it disappear and just be its own simple structure. I think it's a, I don't see this as being the eyesore other people do, but I also don't think that we need to embellish it and make it more than what it is. I think something very simple and plain and let the gardens and whatnot be more of the appeal to that environment is. So I'm at C, honestly, A, like I just feel like the smallest little subtle structure is gonna be less noticed.
Hey, um, when you first made your presentation and, and you talked about complimenting the courthouse. What I was looking for is exactly what you presented tonight. Here, here are some of the details from the courthouse. Here's the stone banding, here's some of the brick relief. These are the kinds of things that, that we could look at in terms of this pump house. And that, that kind of leads you to option C or option D as a kind of baseline. option C or option D is a kind of baseline that, that, that has those kinds of elements. So I, you know, I would not be opposed at all to, you know, I, I think I prefer option D over option C, but I would not be opposed to either one of those. If you and I talked about, you know, creating a little bit more brick relief, that maybe there was a frame to the door that, that could feel like a brick pilaster, but, you know, maybe, maybe that's over complicated for the whole thing. So I, I would be happy with, with C and D, but, but in the end, I think what you're doing is you're establishing a budget. That, that the contractor can work with. So I guess my question is, how, how does this conversation continue with the contractor so that we can end up in the right place? I don't disagree with any of the comments that they've here. Uh, so I think that's the important thing to talk about is if you get to a budget that, that everybody accepts and approval of project and move forward. There's a lot of discussion with, with the contractor in the realm of delegated design and who they hire do the design work, uh, to kind of get this to land in the right place. So I think that, that's an important thing to keep talking about. I do want to circle back to the, the sound issue for, for one second because we've, we've talked about the, the equipment inside operates at roughly sixty decibel. We've talked about ambient noise from traffic on, uh, on high street and surrounding streets, but I, I'm I really look at this immediate environment around the pump house as not connected to street noise particularly. It's down in a depression. It's, it's separate, you know, in terms of its dimension from the streets. So I don't think the street noise is going to mask the noise from the pumping. I don't think white noise from the fountain two hundred and fifty feet away is going to mask noise from, from the equipment. So I, I think we want to establish what, what, and you have been saying, which is the goal is to have forty to forty-five decibels immediately adjacent to the pump house. And we just need to keep that in mind as we go forward as well. Uh, and whether there's an acoustical consultant that gets brought in as part of this to confirm that, I would hate to see groups, you know, on the grass in the vicinity of the pump house bothered by sixty decibels of, of sound coming out of a louver and a door that isn't gasketed and isn't built as an acoustic door. That's where the problem might be. It's not the base of the walls, it's the openings of the base. So I think that just needs to be kept in, in the forefront as we go forward as well.
So I, um, as you know, there's a draft special condition in the, in the, uh, staff report to provide flexibility in terms of location of the building and so forth. Um, I'd actually, I don't know, you've seen, there's a, I made a revision to my proposed draft to make it even more flexible. Um, and I'm just wondering whether, I, I sort of come into this meeting thinking that we would select E design, this our approved design. I wonder whether we can be flexible on that too. It seems like there's a range of opinions here. It doesn't seem like there's really, you know, any of these designs is really going to be awful. Um, so I'm, I'm wondering, or just open that up to the board, whether you're thinking that we can say, you know, one of, three or four of these designs could be approved and we'll leave it up to if, if, if it's not one of those designs, then it comes back for, um, administrative approval, a minor, uh, a minor amendment.
Yeah, I, I think you could say the range of options presented represent an acceptable direction, uh, and could be used to establish an overall budget for the pump house. And as the design evolves, there could be further review for the selection.
Right, so, so, so perhaps within this range, option B through E, is that what we're talking about?
There's no E.
I have a D, oh, yeah, I, I, there was an early one that had a D. So, it's now, what I have is B, is now A.
It sounded, sounded like everyone's pretty happy with either C or D.
Yeah, I would say, I, I said A, but I also said C, I could, C is fine. He's quite nice.
I was gonna say E, but.
Well, I'm good with you.
And I, I prefer D just as.
You prefer what?
I prefer D, but I mean, C is okay too. I do think E is a little overly ornate, although I could see some brick relief around the door instead of the pilasters. So I, I think, C, D range, C, D.
Sorry, if, if, like, I don't know what the issue is, but if there's only an administrator, maybe want to make a comment.
I, I do want, Jonathan Paul Shae is only administrator. As you have this conversation about the flexibility, I'm very glad you're having it. Uh, I do see what appears to be a different roofing material in one of these options up there. If that is acceptable to you to have a range of both design and material, I would hope that you can clarify that here tonight so that as these designs come back and we go through this delegated design process, that if there is a value engineering suggestion made with regard to roofing material or brick siding material, whether it's true brick or, you know, something other that, that you address that tonight so that either Andy or the planning office have a, have a no, better notion of the range of flexibility, not just in the picture, but in the materials as well.
Well, and, and, so are you thinking about the, one of the upper left-hand corner?
I am.
So that's not, I think that's out of the, out of consideration.
Forgive me, I can't read that from back there, so I don't know, and I just, that's why I want to clarify. If you are considering that as an option that considers, or even if we think that the delegated design might bring forward an alternate roofing material as was suggested in the presentation.
Well, remember that, remember that any change from what we approved is going to come back to the, to representatives of the planning board.
I, I do know that. I just know sometimes where it hasn't been discussed in the public forum, we, we struggle and so here you are, and I just bring it to your attention so that you might have a quick conversation on it and if an alternate is acceptable, you could address that right here and now. So that's, that's it.
Thank you. I'm going to switch subjects. I have a, I have a question which is, um, kind of looking down the future. So at the meeting, uh, at the committee meeting yesterday, you spoke about, um, using the dock or rental paddle boats and so forth. So that made me think about where are those boats going to, are we going to be having those boats in the lawn? What's, what, what are you thinking about for?
There won't be many of them and they'll be along the dock.
They're just going to be in the water all the time. But I was just wondering whether you're going to be giving a vote on this. So they just leave at the end of the season, go somewhere else. So, um, I'm going to start by reading, you've seen the draft special condition in, in the staff report. I, um, expanded it, as, as I said, to try to make it more flexible. And then we can think about how to draft a, a motion relating to the design of the building as well. So, um, I just added here. So what I propose, because there was some discussion about, and this may be totally irrelevant, but I wanted it to be as broad as possible. Um, I would have this to substitute for the special condition, uh, in the, in the draft staff report. The board acknowledges that the proposed location of the pump house is subject to change following approval of the overall bar and barrel plan by the city council and execution of the construction contract for the project. Such a change in location may be considered in order to reduce the visual impact of the pump house in the mouth and may include shifting the pump house further from the pond and bedding it partially into the adjacent hillside. Or, this is what I added, or incorporate it into the stair structure on the east side of the courthouse, because that had been discussed. Such change in location may also require or accommodate revisions to the design of the pump house building. Should the applicant determine that it is feasible and desirable to make such a change in the location and design of the pump house, the applicant shall submit a request for minor modification of this special permit, including revised site plan and building elevations. The planning director may approve such minor modification following consultation with members of the planning board designated by the chair, but without review and approval by the full board. So the idea here is to basically have an administrative approval to at least get, um, some board members to weigh in on that, on that change. So, given that suggestion and given the discussion we've just had about building design, are there any suggestions, are we ready to make a motion? Are there any suggestions as to how to phrase that motion?
Can I just? So what you just read, are, are, is there any way that we could just limit it to, I think you discussed three different options for moving it? If we could just say that those three could be considered, but not, you know, putting it near CBS or other, if city council changes.
I would, well, I guess that.
Right, but there's change, I think the language.
So to make it, to say further, further revision shall require amendment of the planning board.
Right, or any other location or, but I think it's because you've got the including. You know, but not, it's not limited to those three potential locations.
So, um, so just add, perhaps just adding a sentence at the end of the scene. Any modification that falls outside of the above shall require amendment of site plan.
Yeah, or maybe just, I, I think you've got.
Take out the, um, the, the, including but not including, like not.
Just say the following options.
It says it may include shifting, so may only include shifting?
It doesn't say options beyond that, right? Only a lot of those locations, right?
As long as those three, I thought, I thought it seemed more open-ended, that it was options including those. It may just be that I.
I think, I think we better just say to add a sentence saying change, the site plan change beyond the above shall require or, and then special.
Any other location.
Yeah, and just make sure it's not too open-ended, I guess that's nice.
So what you said, like, the, the basis of design, acceptable basis of design, uh, represented by options C, D, or E. Um, that, that's, that's one issue. The other is the location of the building and we would be willing to consider alternate locations including pushing it back to the hillside.
And the courthouse has, but not, but you're going to point other locations.
So I would, I would actually make that two separate conditions. The first condition being the architectural and the second condition being the location here.
And can we add a sentence about sound level?
Yes, let me just catch up here. So what was your suggested wording about the, the CD? You guys, you had, you said something just a second. It's very good.
Option C, D, and E represents an acceptable design direction. The location of the pump house.
Uh, you know, you could add in there that the applicant may, uh, construct the proposed structure in accordance with option C, D, and E, right? Uh, as shown here.
Based, based upon the design direction represented in C.
Sure, and then it goes on to, uh, the other portion of the condition or conditions, covers the, uh, of the list. But that, that, no way you're referencing this one over the, or maybe come, what that is where the board is, that there isn't, you know, if A isn't in there, then I would reference C, D, and E.
So I think that, um, I think this is, this is one of those things where it's really, we should go back to the, to reviewing the decision and the following.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, I, we can, we can confirm the intent here. Chair and I can, uh, you're to find the language of the decision. But we can just make it clear with, uh, to, to Jennifer's point earlier, the zoning industry's point earlier. Just as long as we're clear about the box, sort of, that we're defining which of these options might be available for, you know, acceptance right now. And with the flexibility, uh, of the other options are allowed. As long as you've got that cleared up here, you know, in essence here, uh, the chair and I can wordsmith that.
So I guess my question was though, um, can we wordsmith it and that will be filed or should we wordsmith it and bring it back to September sixth meeting?
I think it depends, I guess it depends on how you sort of tail on this. I believe we can do that here tonight. Uh, I think we just need to be clear about, uh, which ones of these are being included, so we can, you know, I think, whether or not you're going up above suggestion of C, D, and E and not necessarily including A maybe. Uh, and not the original A, um, if that's the case. And then going into the other, I, I think it's, I think we can, yeah, confirm the intent here of those special conditions and then the final language could be just wordsmithed by the chair and I.
And then we could, then we could, maybe we should, we should send the final language out to the board and only, if, if anybody raises an objection.
And so can I, yes, can I ask anyone, especially for option E? To be included?
I'm not pushing.
I think that was, it's important, you were supporting some version of the, right?
Just be saying C and D.
It's what's out to bid, so I, I, I don't have any problem with including that in the discussion because it, it represents a budget and a level of detail that, you know, is kind of at the far end of the scale. Yeah, I, I think it's okay to keep it in.
But, but are you saying as drawn, not with some other things that have been discussed, just as drawn?
I mean, Mike, uh, I'm assuming that this thing is going to evolve with, with the contractor and with a delegated design process. And it, it may not end up looking precisely like any of these, C, D, or E, if it remained as a freestanding building. It may be similar, but it may be a little bit different. So I'm okay with leaving all of those options on the table and you're already out to bid using option E. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to say we don't approve that, because you're up to bid with that. So I'm okay with leaving it in the mix because there's a budget established and there's a kit of parts that a contractor can play with. And I think back to the process going forward, I think we can work with them to get to the right combination of pieces that we can go forward. So I, you know, I'm okay with it.
Would it, would it be wrong or a waste of contractors' time if they evenly bid on E? And the numbers, you know, contractors have chosen based on their bid. But then it would just scale back because E wasn't approved, but C and D were the options. So then that contractor by default would also just scale it back. Would that be an option? I am a little nervous about it be, it becoming something like E, because I do think it's too much.
It's, I, I think that's part of the process with the contract. I mean, that's, that's already out on the street.
Except that our, our responsibility is to make a recommendation of design. So, you know, the fact that they went out to contract before they got our recommendation is, is not really our fault.
No, but it establishes a budget that, that we can work. So, again, I don't think you're going to end up with any of these precisely, so. So I'm okay with leaving all three of them in just, just as a basis to work with a contractor and track before.
But if we're allowing E, it could tell me.
No, we don't, not, not if we approve B right now, we don't have the choice of saying no. We, we, that, if we, if we say E is what we want, or if E is one of the things that we accept, then we can't turn around and say no to it.
Yeah, I'll just say I'm only comfortable with C, D.
I'm going to say the same.
That's, that's good.
So A is also not included, right? So is it, sorry, is A, is it?
Original A and you're out.
Yeah, okay.
And do we need to say anything about materials, like the slate roof and then?
I don't think we have anything, any materials here. We, it's not materials.
But we talked about if you move it back, it might not be slate because.
It still says slate.
It says slate.
Well, then we want to. I, I think you covered it by saying that the materials exposed to view are as represented. I, I think you covered it by saying that the materials exposed to view are as represented, what's under the hillside is not really relevant.
It is pushed back, I think it doesn't make sense to do slate because it's too close to. Right, but will it be close to the path and subject to more damage if it's slate? So do we want to?
Her, Bob said, had a suggestion that was, said something to the effect of the design intent represented. I think that provides the latitude that's also represented in the bid process of the delegated design. That if, if it's a slate, if this board were okay with an alternate roofing material that looked like slate, they should say so now. If the alternate roofing material, you know, to slate is, should be something other. Again, this would be a great opportunity to discuss the range that you're, you know, uh, that's acceptable to you. Otherwise, whatever our delegated members are.
Myself, if we're reviewing anything after this to make sure it's a compliance, essentially more.
That's, yeah.
So what is my question? I, I missed this, I'm sorry. Um, does this, does it actually say in the application that this is going to be slate? I missed that.
From my position, uh, it was presented here in the meeting at the slate roof. And so if I were asked as zoning administrator to go back and review compliance, that's what I would have to go back to plus the materials presented. So if you, if you just, if you want to give yourself the latitude, please do.
I thought, I thought. The word slate like.
You heard slate like at the first meeting and when we met with the two board members, we heard a lot of pushback with slate like. So we changed it to slate and that is what is in the bid documents.
Right.
But to the board members' point, if this slides back, that roof will be steps off of the path and it will be subject to vandalism.
Well, the moves, again, if it moves back, that's subject to planning board, planning office and representatives of planning boards review. So you're nothing, if, if it's different than what is being presented to us right now, it can't be approved by the zoning industry or has to go back.
So if you have constructed in accordance with C, D, or E here, or sorry, C, D here, uh, that it, it would be a slate like, right? But other than that, you want. And it just, in this location, this would be the modification that's shifting it back could then contemplate, uh.
Unalternate roofing material. That would be a great condition to put in that would provide the flexibility.
Just to make it clear.
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I think the baseline has to be the real thing. Real slate, real brick. That's, this is, this is the most historic, important historic place in, in the city. I think you got to start with the real thing. And, and if there are budget issues, we, we can take a look at all of that, but, but real slate, real earth, real stone. You know, let's at least start there and.
I think all your, all my ask is that this board discuss what the parameters are, uh, what you're comfortable with in this administrative approval by the chair selected members and the, the planning director. And, you know, once you've established that range of parameters as you have with the design, with materials as well, then, then that decision can be made without coming back. If it goes beyond that, then you'd have to see it again as a board.
So in the spirit of discussing, I would agree with that. And I would also say to the extent that, that for some miraculous reason comes in below the budget, which would blow my mind. I always been on the materials, not in pushing it into the hill, so, and causing other issues that haven't even been all thought through. Like I spent on making, made up really nice materials.
So that sounds like another special condition. Triple periods.
No, because it says slate and brick.
Right, but, um.
And then you said if it moves, then that becomes another conversation that those could be addressed.
So if we all say, or if we all agree, if it gets moved back, you guys can, whoever the representatives are.
I think what Jennifer was asking was, if it doesn't, they come back and they want to do a different material, what do we do then?
Just based on budgets?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm just wondering, i- is it even viable to push it back into the bank at this point? I feel like it's, it's a pretty significant impediment, possibly having to do a bunch of other studies. Is it possible to, to vote on just that aspect of it or talk about that aspect of it as to whether or not we even want to see that? Because everything I'm hearing tonight is this more problematic than helpful.
I don't think we know that. And, and I think because it's delegated design, I mean, I would look at the big dollars. But, but because this is delegated design, the contractor and their engineering team and their architect, whoever is designing the building, they're, they're going to take a look. And, and if there's a discussion with that team as part of this process of, we want to push it twenty feet back further away from the pond and into the hillside. I, I wouldn't take that at this point. They're, they're, they're in the middle of a design process and it might be a very easy thing.
I would say that pushing it back as the sketch of, crew sketch would be highly desirable. As viewed from Auburn Street, you see the roof there, there's trees, et cetera. And it, it would really open up the area. I think it's highly desirable. And at that point, then it'd be wonderful to be able to work with a subcommittee of you folks to talk about other materials. So it's pushed back, I think you ought to be looking at copper, standing seam or flat seam, something other than slate. I own three buildings covered in slate. The difficulty is finding someone and having to match the courthouse, which is months at main slate. It's a nightmare. And it's not going to be better in twenty, forty, sixty years. So I think if we could work with the subcommittee, I think your point is a wonderful one. If the position of it moves, then there's a discussion. And then the materials could be, uh, changed if we allow it, because I don't think if you're, you don't want a slate roof where people can touch it, in my opinion.
So this location is, I understand, like, and, and I understand in this location, there might be a, uh, recognition or a, a fix to slate and brick, right? But in other locations, the modification might contemplate or allow that because it might be more appropriate if it's a little back to the hills and not have.
So, so what I'm seeing here at this point are three quarters. You're sounding like Spanish.
I'm sorry, before I do that, just one last thing. I have to presume that you're not going to want anybody standing on that roof, so what fences and all kinds of, you know, designs. I just, I, I, I just meant to open up the discussion, you know, is this something that we are really considering as a possibility? Because I don't, I have to think this is going to be significantly different, uh, than some of the plan, that's all. Not that it wouldn't be more desirable if you're saying that, and what you presented, this, this is terrible.
As you know, in, in cemeteries, there's a lot of buildings similar to this that you can touch the roof. You know, on hillsides, there's vaults and burial rooms and all that that are decorated on the front. People could touch it, yet they, I'm not going to say that they're never damaged, I think foolish to say, but, uh, I think you could design a building that would be tough enough or wouldn't be bothered, generally speaking. Or you could always have vandalism.
Well, my, my son's moved that. You know, for a while.
I do really like the idea of pushing it back into the hillside if it's feasible.
Yeah, so we leave it all, we leave that.
I prefer.
So, so again, the, the four, I'm going to get to, the, the four special conditions, as I see in sequence are, one, materials, how they could be changed if the, if it's in the same location. Two, how the building could be, um, what the, what the range of, of, basically we're talking about option C and D is what we, what we are, what we are putting. Three, bottom high version of the, the one that's in the, uh, the staff report right now related to changing locations. And four, noise. So what was your idea about noise?
So I would just say, the effective decibel level adjacent to the pump house will be no more than forty to forty-five. Just confirmed by a principal consultant. Is that reasonable?
I think so, yeah.
Was it sixty-five?
Forty, forty.
Forty to forty, forty to forty. It's sixty inside. Oh, it's forty to forty, am I, oh.
Forty-five is it? Because not higher than.
Yeah, just about.
Kim, does the pump run twenty-four seven?
My understanding is it does run, but only, um, it doesn't run, they shut it down in the fall. So it doesn't run fall, winter, and part of spring, it gets like a week, six, seven. Yeah, he said it last night at their.
I think it was May to October.
May, I think that's right, May to October.
But during the season it runs.
Yes.
It runs on.
It's actually keeps the motor running and charging. If it doesn't have to turn off and on, it lasts longer. So you actually want it to be continuously operating.
And then, sorry, one question. So would, would it be possible to use landscaping, you know, upper bikers or whatever around that to mitigate the sound? Or, or is that just another?
Vines.
Mention the works that have.
Yes, and you can make it green, greener, you could put plants, arbor bider on, trees, shrubs, you could plant vines. So that's, uh.
Even though Elliot said no ornamental plants.
Well, I make an exception, I, even though they're all my designs, I make an exception.
Any further discussion?
You need to reread your.
I haven't written it. I think what, what we'll do is we'll, I, I listed the four, related materials, um, design, location, and noise. And we, and, uh, Andy and I will craft something and send it out to the board for confirmation.
I think if, if it captures, like, this one, the conversation we've got today, I think I can gather, and I think the Chair and I probably have a good idea to craft that here, basically, or I think at this point. And I think I'd very like to project the zoning minister driving in here because I think it's very important for us, you know, a situation like this to clarify where, so we don't have ambiguity in any areas, we don't need it. But we have a specificity and of course here some flexibility for the offer that are maybe probable, if it could be done.
So if you think we're ready, uh, I would accept a motion to approve the B of the special permit application submitted for one forty-nine High Street with the four special conditions, uh, out that I've outlined. Uh, and then we'll, if there, if there are concerns about the conditions, then we'd be happy to leave it. Basically, we, we'll send them out and.
If anyone feels that what we drafted does not capture what we talked about tonight, let me know. Uh, but hopefully we've captured it sufficiently and then here we're referencing officially C and D, and then we've captured other pieces of fact about those special additions.
Okay, great.
So.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'm stuck for a little, thank you very much. Okay. Um, no, the next item is also venture.
We were going to continue this night. I'm actually not prepared to.
Actually, I think, uh, it's up to you, I guess, in part, but the question here was actually typically the board might want to, um, dispense with the completeness vote and the waivers. Uh, just to have those taken care of, it's up to you, whether you want to.
But I'm, I, I wasn't prepared to present anything tonight, so.
Want to postpone until, is that okay with the board?
That's fine.
Okay, right. The same night, we'll, uh, the request is to continue to nine six, can we do that the same night?
Yes, so I, I'd like to continue.
We want to continue to nine six, me second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Which leaves us with our last public hearings, um, the application of Catherine Bibby, seventy-five Parker Street, uh, for, um, special permit for use at, well, seventy-five Parker Street.
Yeah.
Thank you. It will be, probably won't be as long as.
Wonderful.
So, um, could you present your application? Let us know what you're requesting.
Uh, we, we have the materials, I have those on the screen here, so if you want to speak to this, what you'd like to do, uh, we'll have that for reference, but just make sure the board understands what you're requesting.
Very simple, it's an existing building there. Within the building, there is a, a some area. Um, I'm requesting to utilize that area as it is, just painted and changed aesthetically without available, right? To be used for massage and skincare.
Okay, and this is before us because is, uh, a special permit for use in the industrial district.
Correct.
And we had.
There's no sign, there are no changes to the site, right? They're being proposed here.
Correct.
Yeah.
And there was some discussion about parking, um, what is that yellow?
So the yellow on the front that you see there, that is designated parking that will be allocated to my business. I think there are six or seven spots right there that will be allocated to us. And then for any overflow on the right, well, the left hand side, if you look at it from I'm at, um.
Parallel.
Parallel spots also, yes.
And these are proposed to be straight or lined, uh, the fire department wanted those just to be clarified.
I believe that's correct, I was told.
And, and so is that pavement or at, at, at that point that can be painted and?
It's already painted.
Yeah, these would have to be lined on the pavement, but the pavement's already there. And I, I believe that we've already confirmed with the fire department that the width and composition with those spaces, they just want to have straight, they're clearing. And when cars park in the spaces and not be blocking their aisle, they were trying to get by, yes.
I just want to get a little clearer on the material, it's hard to tell if they.
So you are correct, it is paved, uh, the whole area of the front, the side, and in back of the building is paved. Okay, you, you are the one.
So, um, will this all be one business unit or is there another business operating there?
There is another business operating, yeah, also.
But there's sufficient parking for both uses?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, with those, and that's why the spaces, there would be added on that space, there, there's extra space on the side, there you can see this image.
Okay, so there are other parking spaces that weren't shown, uh?
Yes.
The yellow space actually represents the parking for the new business as well as hot damn leathers, which will remain in a reduced capacity.
Okay, but there's sufficient.
But between the two yellow areas, there's sufficient for the entire structure.
Okay.
And the uses that are being proposed.
Okay, thank you.
So this is before us because in the industrial park, whenever there's a change of use?
It's, 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 but it's a use that required, it's listed in the table of uses as required a special permit. The planning board is a special permitting authority in the industrial park. And we're going to be talking about that further.
Yeah, but not for tonight necessarily, but we will be having some discussion, just to clarify, I think I would characterize it more as a housekeeping matter, but, uh, just clarifying, we have a lot of real patterns here where the planning board tends to have the commercial industrial areas of the city, makes sense for the planning board to have anything that, you know, majority of that. And boards, given that the CBA typically deals with residential, we can make a little bit more clear in our zoning ordinance, you know, that where, uh, people can almost look at the map geographically and see in a given zone, with former employees, we have some, Jennifer and I are looking to clean up a number of things in this zoning ordinance. And one of them is for, we happen to have an odd provision in there, one spot that says someone needs to get a special permit for it to use, uh, uh, from both the zoning board appeals and the planning board together, actually, which seems a little bit silly. Uh, so I think we could reduce that to just the planning board in that, you know, in that context, for instance. So, uh, here, it just happens to be that the, the assignment here is for the planning board, the planning board has grown historically over time in taking some of that authority, whereas originally it was just the CBA.
So it's just always change of views will come to us.
Always a change of use, if that change of use requires.
If that use that's being, then you're going to require a special permit.
Okay.
Yeah.
There are uses that are allowed as, right, perhaps some uses require, and what is the title of this use? It is.
The, uh, is it?
It's a professional service.
Professional service.
If it was a new building, it would have site plan review, you would be looking at it for that anyway. Where it's an existing structure, if it was a by right use, you would not see it. But because this use, as Rick pointed out, calls for a special permit, you are seeing it simply to, to look at, is there any special concern that needs to be raised? And if there is not, then.
Right, and, and to add one more little twist on this, uh, we've been talking, you know, over the past year about making this particular area of the industrial park more like a business district because there's so many office uses in it. If that happened, this may no longer be a. If that happened, this may no longer be a, this may not, may no longer be a special permit use.
Right, yeah, we're actually gonna see a board, like, to remember, we're gonna hear more discussion about that in the coming months, anyway. The M B T A community guidelines from the H C D, we we will have to be looking at changes uh for multifamily housing around the train station. But um I think going along with that is, we've seen already historically a change in in that. Um and so I think what we're trying to do is maybe capture the fact that it actually could be a good thing as a transition between the housing of the train station. And the business park to that would be a complete isolation of uses, right? So we have an actual organic kind of mixture between those. We've already started to have that trend, so now we need to talk about maybe making that a little bit more formal and as as a separate discussion to some degree. How housing may or may not fit into that, given maybe the stage requirement that we add some of that around the train station board that we currently have. So, but we'll get into that discussion about the housing as a separate matter.
Okay, if there are no more questions, I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anybody in the public who wishes to be heard on this matter? There's somebody online that's not interested, I guess, so. Close the public comment period and uh we'll look for a motion.
We have a public uh letter that was sent in.
Uh if the board hasn't received it, it was posted to the uh website.
Relative to potentially current residential use in that building.
Right, so actually, I don't have.
Yeah, sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but there it was a uh concern raised by uh another constituent about a residential unit on the property. And then that was uh sort of pullback that uh accusation of there being a unit, just pullback of things. You know, I don't know if you're.
I read it also.
Yeah, I don't hear him speak that at all, but that was one of the questions that was raised because someone in the public, when they called on his application, raised the question, it might be. Relevant if you're able to speak to it, just to clarify what is actually going on at the property. Um residential uses aren't, you know, allowed there, so I just. It may not be related to your use, uh but if you're able to speak to.
There is no residential use going on at the property.
Okay, thank you, that's.
It's an industrial building and.
Okay, so that that's helpful here because the board sometimes hears things and and here, at least for the record, we've heard from the applicant, there's not a residential unit and therefore hopefully it's not relevant to. The subject matter here and not a a violation of zoning, we keep it worried about the whole context, whichever you want, I didn't know that or. I think we're, unless anybody else has any more questions, I think, uh sometimes.
Wanted it asked.
Yeah, it's very reasonable, given that we received a comment and we discussed it today, I think.
Yeah, okay, that's all. Whoever wrote in, wrote in at like twelve thirty this afternoon.
Well, it was the second one, yes.
And then wrote in and almost retracted what he originally wrote.
I think that the original, like, what I read, the original one, was that perhaps the applicant was living there and then it was retracted to. Maybe someone is living there.
Correct, yeah.
Right. So I just wanted to know if somebody was.
No one is gonna.
So I'll make a motion to um approve the special permit uh submitted, made the special conditions that were given by the fire department for the strapping and the appropriate signage.
Thank you. Okay, uh all in favor? Any opposed?
I'm sorry, who's the second?
All set?
All set. Okay, um. You have C P C.
We'll carry that until the board. I'll just suggest that certainly by the spring of next year, we'll want to have somebody assigned. And now, and by the way, um I I have to mention this as a somewhat bureaucratic process, even though members here on the planning board have already been. May have already been appointed by the city council, the way that our charter and ordinance is where it is. For you to be a member here, to be assigned to C P C, we also need time to take that representative to the city council, to have the city council. Appoint that representative, which is already been a member appointed to the board, to be a representative to the other board. It's a little bit bureaucratic, uh unfortunately, I I raised this concern, I mean, perhaps we can get away from some bureaucracy. Uh but the way it's written, it requires, even though it's a member that's already been appointed to this board, another appointment by the city council, so we need to alert the time at least to. Run that through another ten months or run that through the city council for appointment.
Okay, um so minutes. I was reading the minutes of the October fifth, twenty twenty-two meeting, as I'm sure you all do. I found that we, the minutes didn't say we ever approved the West End Fire Station budget. So I thought it would be appropriate for us simply to go back and um. Retroactively make that, make it amendments.
Yeah, and I apologize, was that, was that during the time that we did, I'm trying to remember this point. Probably the reason Bryce took us there and, you know, again, um. We, by the way, I'm sorry, I don't typically bother to look through the minutes so much, unless I'm simply relaying our story, I don't, I typically do that.
Oh, I do.
No, I don't. Um I'm sorry, we didn't raise, but I don't typically sort of do all that, it's, you know, it's meant to capture things that we, you know, here without someone who's.
So anyway, the minutes recorded, two votes by the board, one vote to approve the requested waivers and a second vote to accept the application as complete. And there wasn't anything about approving the the application, so I went back and listened to the recording. And the recording says the first vote was to both grant the waivers and accept the application as complete. And the second vote was to grant site plan approval. So the board did vote appropriately, and that vote is listed in the approval document, but it's just not in the minutes. So I just, just because, you know, it's a city project and I didn't want to have any, anything that was, could possibly cause problems in the future. Um I wanted to correct that, and so I proposed that the minutes of October fifth, twenty twenty-two meeting, amended this to ours. One, on page four of the minutes, at the end of the sentence, Don Walters made a motion to grant the requested waivers of this middle requirements. Found in section C V E as requested by the applicant, add the phrase, and to determine the application for site plan review. For one fifty-three story avenue as complete, including waiver before mentioned, submitted requirements and as further amended this evening. And two, on page five of the minutes, delete the first sentence of the second paragraph, which begins Don Walters' made a motion. And insert that it is placed the following sentence, Don Walters' made a motion to grant site plan approval for one fifty-three story avenue as amended this evening. And that was simply clear up the uh. I sent you an email, did, you know, do all, we're all vendors, we're all vendors eligible except for Charlie.
Yeah, sorry, actually, what I was gonna say, it's not a big deal, quite frankly, at this point, by the way, I was actually thinking, it's perfectly fine, in my view, if the board wants here to. Um suggest that that be added as sort of an editor's note, so to speak, to clarify what happened. Um given that we don't, we're only getting to, you know, members that were there at the meeting, you know, we don't necessarily have everybody here. Uh going on the minutes and sort of questioning the other board members who voted on the minutes previously, to have it done in more as a, as a note.
So that is, that can happen?
As a clarification, I think that's the more appropriate way of dealing with it here, is just so we're not giving. Adding a, you know, a note to the minutes to clarify that, well, you know, missing the original draft minutes. Clarify here, the record shows, you know, and just have that, again, I don't, I'm not wetting any particular braising, but I think that's a better way of, yeah.
So we take the, we take my wording to just.
Exactly, yeah, exactly, yeah, it could just be a box added. It would be good here because the board should itself uh note that as was established or inserted here.
So could I have a motion to to do that?
I would move to add the note to the minutes of October.
Thank you. Okay, um minutes of July nineteen, um. I have sent in comments, Bob sent in comments, I don't know if he has sent any comments or not, but if not, then I'd accept a motion to. Uh approve the minutes of uh the nineteenth as amended.
I want to approve minutes of July nineteen as amended. I'll second.
Thank you, uh all favor? That's right, so so uh. Uh and August second, which was a really tight meeting.
It just looks so like I watched the recording, but while for me, it's like.
You should watch the recording.
Yeah.
The recording is amazing, it's it's total silence.
We're smiling the whole time, really.
I I would, no, just for your benefit, uh I did notice earlier on tonight, James Pope, who was our new I T director, uh because I met with him today to talk about all this stuff. And we'll see, I'm just looking at this, he would actually imagine it really convenient just to see the audio was like at home, so. Uh because we've been raising the issue, we brought more up because we've got issues here and this.
For the nineteenth, the recording was bad, just like you listened to it.
But the second was worse. So um so Beth, uh Heather and Charlie need to abstain from the minutes of August second. So uh accept a motion to approve, I want to approve August second minutes. Okay, all favor? Thank you, anybody who's opposed, please. Okay, anything else?
Uh I would just say, although you're done with short term units tonight, it is not, you know, of course, we're up with the zoning, so. Um we will be getting more heavily into zoning in the end of the fall, uh we'll be bringing things more, obviously, uh some degree, but. Um for your consideration, so you can provide some advisory opinion to the city council, we'll be asking for sponsors of some things. Some of it will be the M B T A communities guidelines requirements and us following up on uh discussing what we think is the appropriate response to the state warning more housing. Uh allowed as a right by the train station, so we'll be just discussing that, Rick and I have to talk about all of that. We'll circle back on some of that uh with you to give you our our ideas, just what we think it might be the appropriate option or options that we maybe should bring forward. Um kind of thinking about that, route one area of the corridor and so forth in the four yard district. Uh the other piece is, is really picking up with some of that sort of housekeeping, um minor policy level adjustments in the ordinance, few places we've talked about, I'll summarize for you, Rick, or. But um some of it is actually just cleaning up, you know, again, this whole language we have that's poorly written and things like that, that what I mentioned earlier where. I, for some inexplicable reason, a provision was put in saying you need a special permit for what use from both boards, not really sure why. It was for multi-family over twenty units. Uh I'm not exactly sure why it's needed, why it would be necessary to go to two boards for that, it would make sense to have at least one board, you know, a couple of whole range of things, but not necessarily have somebody bounce back and forth. Between two boards, it may not be on the same night, they may have different opinions about what happens. Um it's not always, you know, a good idea, so um that's the kind of thing we're trying to clean up amongst other things. So um and it just takes a lot of time to get through these things because the bureaucratic process, you know, amending them is not just grabbing it, it's also. You know, sorting through, explaining to everybody why it's been done, the politics sometimes are debated, it's a possible question, but hopefully some of these things are just housekeeping. That we need to propose forward with a simultaneous jo- joint public hearing, so you might have a joint public hearing in the coming week, weeks or months, that's going to be, you know. Six or seven zoning amendments, something over very quick and simple, we could just plow right through them. And then we might have one or two, there are policy level things, have to decide whether to break that off and keep it separate, maybe a committee or if you're good with it, I could do it well. Anyway, I'll circle back on that when we deal.
Anything else, my David? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.